Good afternoon and welcome. The Monday, October 1st, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting is now in session. Pastor Glenn McCraney has been kind enough to come and give us the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. If you could all rise.
Let us pray. Dear God, on this first day of a new month, we pause for a few moments to give our thanks for our nation conceived in liberty and dedicated to the principle that all people are endowed by you with certain rights, life, and liberty and pursuit of happiness. Give to our country and the people of Currituck County a zeal for justice that we may use our liberties in accordance with your gracious will. Grant your divine wisdom upon our county commissioners as they meet tonight, instill within them visions of service to the people of Currituck. May they feel the deep responsibilities of their elected office and light in their hearts and minds that they may behold the ever-dawning of a bright and new future for our beloved Currituck County. As residents of this historical area, may we be a grateful people seeking to serve rather than to be served. May we celebrate the rich gifts of life and freedom and liberty which has been bestowed upon us by the service and sacrifice of others. May we be in prayer for our neighbors whose homes and lives have been devastated by winds and rains. May we all seek to search for means to provide physical assistance and gifts to aid them. Let us live our lives fully and cherish your daily mercies in all things. In these we pray, and all God's people say, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Pastor Glenn, thank you for those kind words. First order of business, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Moving on to public comments, I have one person sign up for public comments this evening, and that would be Josh Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I come before you this evening as a member of the 350th Anniversary Committee of Currituck County. We are doing a historical tour of homes on Friday, October 12th, and Saturday, October the 13th. So I wanted to provide the Commissioners with the program, which is available on the Chamber website, www.currituckchamber.org. We are selling tickets to the two days. Friday, we'll be touring the Currituck Outer Banks, Corolla. We have several buildings over there. Saturday will be Knott's Island and the mainland. Tickets are $20. So again, they can be purchased on the Chamber website or by calling the Chamber at area code 252-453-9497. We have a variety of historical buildings on the tour, including lifesaving stations, two hunting lodges, a church, the general store right across from this building, houses from the late 1700s through the 1930s. So I think we really cover the geography and variety of buildings in Currituck. So we're glad to do that. Quick thank you to Commissioner Bob White for lending us his vehicle to go up into the four-wheel-drive area because that building is going to be a little tough for some people to access. So, and then Twitty and Company is also providing some transportation up there. So thank you very much for that. But I wanted to give each of the Commissioners a program and a ticket to attend. We're only giving you one because hopefully your spouse or friend that goes with you will buy another one. So, you know, that's sales 101. Don't give people everything they want.
So it's buy one, get one free.
Correct. Correct. So we'll go ahead and pass these around to you.
Fair.
But hope to see you there. And of course, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. That's all I have signed up for public comments. Would anyone else like to speak this evening? With that, I'll close the public comments section. Moving on to Commissioners' report, I'm going to start this evening. I'm sure everyone's aware, we had a major catastrophe storm here a couple of weeks ago. While it's not in the news every day, it's still out there. There's a lot of folks suffering really bad south of us, and we need to keep them in our thoughts and prayers, and we need to keep those donations coming. They're going to have a long road to recovery. Federal stuff's coming in, but the immediate needs are still there. So if you can, if you want to, if you don't want to, give to someone, contribute to someone. Trucks are going down on a regular basis. There's places online. I don't know if that's posted on the county website, but get out there, help some folks. If you can donate some time, go down there and help them. People are still down there cleaning our houses today. It's a long road back to where we have to be. So if we can, keep them in our thoughts and prayers and do what we can for them. They would do the same for us, and that's what makes North Carolina so great. So thank you for that. And one other piece of news here, it's my understanding that ODU beat Virginia Tech last weekend. I just want to put that out there in case someone wasn't aware of that.
Wow.
Wow, I know, right? And just a note, just a note.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Somehow I feel I'm going to get paid back for that one, but it's worth it. And that's really all I have this evening. Thank you all for being here. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Hall.
Couple of things. First of all, the College of the Almaral, right around the corner from us, we're one of the participating counties with them. Enrollment is up 6.5% this year. Folks, that's a great thing. Instead of going away to college for your first two years, stay at home, save some money, get your education started, get the classes that aren't as time-consuming, shall I say, while you're at home, and you can save that money. The college is right around the corner. Or if you don't want to go to get a two-year or four-year degree, you can take classes that'll help you with HVAC, welding, et cetera. So remember, the College of the Almaral. Secondly, Mr. Bass reminded me, the 350th event, it will be on November 3rd. It will be at the Heritage, excuse me, it will be Heritage Day. It will be at the CCRC, otherwise known as the Horse Forum, the Rule Center. It's on Spot Road, November 3rd. It starts at noon. It is free for the 350th Anniversary Event. At 1:00, barbecue, the locals and the Kansas City barbecue. I think Commissioner Beaumont is cooking and the locals. So come on out and support that. I think that's $10, and you can eat some good barbecue. At 5:00, we have the bull riding. That's, again, that's $20. So folks, you can spend as little or as much as you want. You can spend part of the day or the whole day. So come on out and see us, because that is Heritage Day, that is our day. Thank you.
Commissioner White?
Nothing from me this evening. Thank you.
Commissioner Rethridge?
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, as all of y'all know, elections has a very special place in my heart, and y'all need to make sure that you get out and register to vote. If you've had a name change, or if you moved here in the county, voter registration ends on October the 12th, which is Friday, and One Stop Voting will start on Wednesday, October the 17th at 8:00 a.m. And Election Day is November the 6th, and the polls will be open that day from 6:30 in the morning to 7:30 that night. You need to remind your friends, your neighbors, all the young people, that's where you make your voice heard. If you don't like the way something's going, get out and vote. So please make sure that everybody gets registered and gets out and votes for the November election. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rethridge. Commissioner Gilbert?
Couple of things. The Moyoc Women's Club is very active in the community, and on October 13th, instead of having our Frosty Toes event for scholarships, we're doing the Moyoctoberous Fest. And it's at the Weeping Radish, so there's a 5K. If those of you are looking for your October event for a 5K, you got it there. And then on the 21st, the Moyoc Women are doing a Farm-to-Table event in conjunction with the 350th Anniversary. And that's here, right outside of the courthouse, in the street. We're closing off the streets, thanks to our Currituck Sheriff's Department that's going to help us with that. But it's all local farmers, corn, just barbecue, everything that's local. The event is free, but it's $10 to partake in the food-to-table luncheon. So mark your calendars for October 21st for the Farm-to-Table. And then we have got, on Thursday night, the Animal Shelter Advisory Board meets at 7:00 p.m. at the Animal Shelter. I spoke with our Director of Parks and Recreation, and our park, our dog park should be completed with the fencing within a couple of weeks. So this is the project that we've been working on for years to get something out in the Maple area for our dog park. So we will now have a dog park that's fenced in, and you can bring your fur babies over and let them run and have some fun. So again, if you're interested, the Advisory Board meets Thursday night, October 4th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Animal Shelter.
Thank you, Commissioner Gilbert. Commissioner Payment?
Just one thing. I'd like to, on behalf of the Board, extend a warm welcome to Ben Stickleather. He's our new Assistant County Manager. Today is his first day in the job. He's in the audience with us tonight. We had a reception earlier. We all got to introduce ourselves, meet with them. Very, very interesting and nice gentlemen. Look forward to working with him and helping with our county manager for the county here to get things moving along. And again, we just wanted to say thank you and looking forward to working with you here. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Payment. Ben, it's official now, you got to stay. It's the way it's going to be. Moving on, administrative reports. Tonight, we have a very special occasion. Ray Matusko contacted me a while back and was interested in getting our retired Sheriff Susan Johnson the Old North State Award. And as a Board of Commissioners, we couldn't be more excited than to make this happen. So we're truly blessed to have that happen this evening. The Honorable Judge Carlton Cole, Superior Court Judge from Hertford, is here tonight to give that presentation. So if I can, at this point, have Judge Cole and Sheriff Johnson and anyone else that wants to come forward, get in the circle, along with the Commissioners as well, and anyone else that wants to come up. We all come on up here, and let's get in the middle of the circle.
The Sheriff, Mr. Clerk.
All of you come on. Come on. There's such a glory.
Trying to get through this without being emotional, because over the years you have done so much to aid and help us. The pleasure to have an opportunity to present this award to you. Thank you. Those of you who don't know, I've witnessed her train two sheriffs. So when she got the appointment, it was around 2010, or the second time I went up to Superior Board, she knew the job inside and out, because she had trained Sheriff Newberry and Perfect at that time. And so it is indeed an honor, a privilege, for George Detroit, George Hurry, I understand, Gerald, her husband, I used to, he was...
He was in Goldsboro, isn't he?
He's in Goldsboro. But it is indeed an honor, a privilege, and a pleasure to be able to present this award. So on behalf of the Governor of the State, on behalf of Representative Sider, who could be here, our clerk of Superior Board, our Sheriff, and this whole board, the whole Sheriff's Department, and this county, it is very, very, it's a privilege for us to pay you your great work and your leadership in this state of our possession. The Sheriff said, "This award reads for dedication and service beyond expectation and excellence in the great state of North Carolina." On behalf of the citizens of this state, I'd so thank Susan Johnson, the Old North State Award. Working together, we can make North Carolina a place of unlimited opportunity, a place where anyone who studies hard, works hard, builds a life with high values can fulfill and even excel their potential. And Sheriff, you always been my sheriff. When I was chief of management, we had our meetings, and the other six sheriffs in this traditional business, I had always told them, "It's my sheriff, it's my home." My sheriff, on behalf of those persons, who have been measured, I present you this award.
Thank you. I don't have my speeches anymore. This is very humbling, and I'm very excited to receive it, and there couldn't have been anybody any better to give it to me. And thank you very much. And thank you all. My service was as wonderful as it was because of the people that I had with me and behind me, including my family and my employees. You don't get to be successful by yourself, and that is something that I've always been grateful for, is knowing that I had their support. And most of the time, I could count on every single one of them. When I was in need, or if the citizens were in need, if there was something that needed to be done, everybody just jumped in, and they just made me as successful as I was. And I thank them for that.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you for coming. I've known Susan since I've lived here. Probably one of the first people I met, not by accident, as most would assume. But I appreciate your friendship, and I appreciate your leadership in this county. Thank you.
I didn't see you sitting there enough to get her up.
And I'm sure I'll speak on the rest of the citizens of Currituck. Thank you.
Thank you, you're here. Thanks very much. Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Time to go fishing.
I didn't want to.
As far as it goes, man, sorry. That's all you get. Right, right. Well, man, that was really great.
That's probably a good segue into healthy communities.
Yes, yes, yes. Moving on to the next agenda item this evening. Beth Wrights with Chesapeake Health Community Needs has come to give us their needs assessment.
Well, I'm asking for support of our community needs assessment, is what I'm looking forward to.
Okay, moving on to the next.
All right. All right. Getting started. Good evening, Chairman and fellow Commissioners. My name is Beth Wrights, and I am the Director of Community Health Services at Chesapeake Regional Healthcare. I just want to say first, thank you so much for all the support you've given Chesapeake Regional over the years. And now I want to talk to you about a project we're working on, a community health needs assessment. Working with me, I have two co-partners. I have Virginia Solokam from the hospital, and Lynn Ann Gortow with the Planning Commission, and we're all working on this project together. We did a community needs assessment three years ago, and when we did the community needs assessment, we really just focused on the city of Chesapeake. This year, and we plan to do this every three years as a community needs assessment, this year we want to really open this up and focus on our whole service area. So not only just the city of Chesapeake, but we want to look at northeast North Carolina as well as southern Virginia Beach, because we're very much involved in the Currituck County and northeastern North Carolina. We've got our Currituck Internal Medicine, we have offices in Elizabeth City, and we're co-owners of the Outer Banks Hospital. So we want to have feedback and hear from the citizens in Currituck County and find out really what are their health needs, what are their concerns? Is it access to healthcare? Is it more active lifestyle? We just need to hear back from them what they're interested. So our goal right now is to have at least 1,000 of the surveys completed. I'm happy to say, we're now, we have already collected over 500 surveys. But not only do we want these surveys to come from Chesapeake, we want to make sure that we hear from all the different areas. So also in Camden and Currituck and southern Virginia Beach. So we want to get the word out. We need everyone to complete the community needs assessment. Now, we have the community needs assessment. It can be done online, or there's a paper survey. So it takes about 12 minutes to take the survey, not very long, but the input from that is just so valuable. We're going to run and have the survey link out until the end of October. So you've got all month to take the survey. And then after October, the Planning Council's going to take all that information, put it together, and then we'll have a presentation on the results. And hopefully, we'll be invited back, and we can share those results with you. And then from there, start planning on what is the next step. So what I'm asking is, we need some help. We need the ChesapeakeSurvey.com, that link, out on websites and in social media. Share it with your friends and family. Maybe take it to some, all these fun events y'all were talking about earlier, just so that we can get a lot of these surveys completed. We can have, we have flyers, you can put in the libraries or social services and senior centers. And also, we're doing one-on-one interviews. So if you'd like to be a key stakeholder in one of those interviews, then Lynn Ann will be organizing that and making that arrangement. So let us know, because we want to hear. If you guys each want to be a part of that, please let us know. So we really want to thank you so much for giving us this opportunity. Do you have any questions that I can answer for you?
Beth, I'll just tell you, we'll make sure that we get information out through our Public Information Officer and all points around the county. We're happy to help you, and I for one know how important it is.
Great, thank you.
For spearheading that.
Sure, thank you so much.
Anyone else have anything?
I would just like to add, thank you for coming to Currituck from Chesapeake, as a native from Chesapeake, and I work in Chesapeake now. Thank you for reaching out, and I've worked with the elected officials in Chesapeake with other items. So this is good to have you reaching across the lines also. So thank you for coming on down to Currituck.
I have a soft heart for you guys too, because I live, I have a house on Waterlily, so...
Well, then, there you have it.
Y'all are awesome. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out. Moving on to new business, Board appointments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to reappoint Jerilee Adams, Terry Anderson, Brian Daggett, and Barbara Marzetti to the Ocean Sands North Crown Point Watershed District Advisory Board.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Any other Board appointments this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Motion for approval?
If we can get a second first, that would be great.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Under the budget amendment for the auditorium, there's $100,000 for lighting system.
Yes, ma'am. That is to, we've had problems with the lighting system in the auditorium, and this is to completely replace the entire, all of the lights, the mechanisms, but it's a complete rework of the lighting system in the auditorium.
And also, under the finance office, a position, we moved $7,412 into a vacant finance position there.
This is, the, there was an employee that was employed in Social Services that applied for and was granted a transfer into a vacant finance office position. So it's not a new position being created. There's a person moving from Social Services into Finance. And so the longevity for that employee was initially budgeted in Social Services, needs to be moved into the Finance Department to support the longevity, the cost of longevity, which will now be paid out of a different department than it was originally budgeted in.
Was this a new position?
No, ma'am. The, the, there was, an existing position in Finance that was vacant. An employee left that position. And we put it out for advertisement, and we had an employee in Social Services who applied for and requested a transfer to go from her current position in Social Services to the newly vacant position in Finance. So no new positions are created at all. It resulted from a person that, that, they didn't leave employment, they actually wanted part-time work to, and moved into a part-time position in the library vault. So it's, so when the original longevity for that budget for the person was, it was budgeted in Social Services, when they moved in Finance, Finance did not have, carry a budget large enough to cover the longevity. It was in the Social Service. So we've got to move the money from where it was originally budgeted to where it's going to be paid from for the remainder of the year, which is going to be Finance. But there's no, no positions are being created.
Okay. Is this the same person that moved to Planning?
They were requested to go to Planning, but this position came available, and this position is closer to the skill set of the employee, so they ended up not going to Planning, they went into this position.
Question about budget amendment?
Okay, if we can get a second first, that'd be great. I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Under the budget amendment for the auditorium, there's $100,000 for lighting system.
Yes, ma'am, that is to, we've had problems with the lighting system in the auditorium, and this is to completely replace the entire, all of the lights, the mechanisms, but it's a complete rework of the lighting system in the auditorium.
And also, under the finance office, a position we moved $7,412, says into a vacant finance position there.
This is the, there was an employee that was employed in social services that applied for and was granted a transfer into a vacant finance office position, so it's not a new position being created, there's a person moving from social services into finance. And so the longevity for that employee was initially budgeted in social services, needs to be moved into the finance department to support the longevity, the cost of longevity, which will now be paid out of a different department than it was originally budgeted in.
So was this a new position?
No, ma'am. An existing position in finance was vacant, an employee left that position. And we put it out for advertisement, and we had an employee in social services who applied for and requested a transfer to go from her current position in social services to the newly vacant position in finance. So no new positions are created at all. It resulted from a person that, they didn't leave employment, they actually wanted part-time work to, and moved into a part-time position in the library. So it's, so when the original longevity for that budget for the person was, it was budgeted in social services, when they moved in finance, finance did not have, carry a budget large enough to cover the longevity. It was in the social service. So we've got to move the money from where it was originally budgeted to where it's going to be paid from for the remainder of the year, which is going to be finance. But there's no, no positions are being created.
Okay, is this the same person that moved to planning?
They were requested to go to planning, but this position came available, and this position is closer to the skill set of the employee, so they ended up not going to planning, they went into this position. But yes, it is the same person.
Any further discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Moving on to County Manager's Report?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. With that, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. With that, I will open a special meeting of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District and discuss budget amendments, and I'll hand it over to Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, you have two budget amendments for the Ocean Sands Advisory, or excuse me, Water and Sewer District to consideration. The first one is to appropriate money to cover the cost that the district incurred through Mercy Pumping when the storm came through in the summer. And the second one is to cover the cost of mailing utility bills for the remainder of the year. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Scanlon?
Motion for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. With that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn the special meeting of the Ocean Sands Water Sewer District.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for coming this evening. Have a great evening.